You know, if, because otherwise it's going to get too confusing again. It looks like two taxes, which it is, and it's just gonna, it's gonna lose again. And Mr. Bond, he's a great attorney, and, but he also, he works with the Election Commission, and so I think his, sometimes his hands are a little bit tied. We need to push the envelope with him, and we'll do it next week, saying, just say pursuant to statute. I mean, Bensonville changed it dramatically, pledged it to the library, and they passed it, and they're off and collecting. So, for us to say pursuant to statute, you know, I'm sure we'll be okay.
So, right now, we're under the understanding, though, that this is, that we can do this municipal retailers occupation tax on its own. So, we can probably formalize this verbiage, and then if those factors change between this meeting and our city council meeting, we can work that out at that time. So, I'm gonna make the motion to, uh, to accept the proposed November phrasing as stated in the August 4th, 2006 memo, shall the City of Wooddale and non-home rule community impose a 1% sales tax pursuant to the municipal retailers occupation tax for property tax relief, which will save city services for the residents of the City of Wooddale. The proposed tax will not apply to sales of food or prescription drugs.
I'll second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd make a motion to concur with Alderman, Toleman's recommendation, uh, to make a pledge to the residents, and we'll do it through the letter and the marketing materials, that if the 1% sales tax increases, that the city council, or the city council shall or will, uh, roll back the increase in the vehicle stickers prior to increase.
Is there a second?
Second.
And the question?
Question.
Alderman Wesley.
You know what? I, I would vote no for that, due to the fact is that instead of the vehicle stickers, I think we should look at the water rates before we do anything. Because according to the water rates, which will be discussed today, we are the five, fifth highest water rate for DuPage County, according to this. Hey, so before the vehicle sticker goes, I would support the water issue before I do the vehicle stickers.
Alderman Tolemy.
I think, I understand what Alderman Wesley's, I really do understand his concern, as I saw the same numbers he did. I'm sure everybody up here looked at the, looked at their packet. However, I think that, that, I think, in this instance, what we're talking about, um, number one, if we do in fact, if the referendum does in fact pass, that will bring money, additional monies into the city. We can then discuss, is there a way we can roll back the water rates? However, I want to preface it by saying, we've had this discussion on numerous occasions, and if in fact, this council, along with previous councils, since the city, this city went on the City of Chicago Water, would have every year implemented the correct fee structures that they should have implemented, this city would not be where it is today in terms of, on the, on the ratings being, uh, you know, at the, at the high end of the costs. Um, saying that, I think that is a discussion we can have and another. I, I do not believe that rolling back the vehicle sticker, um, has an impact on this other than the fact that it will help, uh, possibly get this referendum passed.
There's a motion, and there's a second. Anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Ayes have it. Motion carries.
And Chairman, another item on the referendum, if I may.
Alderman Suback?
At the strategic planning session, we talked about possibly going to a outside service to assist in the, the marketing. And I know that, uh, our city attorney at the strategic planning meeting said that it would be allowable for the city to expend monies. We even talked about, is Alderman here to donate some monies to a service to do a marketing campaign. Uh, I was in contact with a company who helped pass the referendum in Elmhurst for the school referendum, and they're willing to come in and give information to the city manager. Is that something we still want to propose to go forward on? Because they really, they take the ball and they run with it. I know there's gonna be additional work for us to do, but they actually do, they do their own marketing. They target people, they target the voters, and it's a fairly reasonable amount of money to spend to get these referendums passed. And historically, when you see towns that have passed these referendums, usually they use one of these types of marketing services. So, it never went beyond the strategic planning meetings. Either, and this referendum's coming up quick, uh, either we need to, we need to bring this up at a future meeting, I think, to discuss, or I can just have them, give it to the city manager at this point.
Yeah, it, as a chairman, I'd like to have that discussion now, though, because our runway is getting shorter. So, let's talk through it now, if, if we want to do that or not.
In my opinion, there's no harm in getting proposals in from, I know Mr. Bond knows some companies. I can have this other company give it to Mr. Williams. He can put us a report. We could see how much it costs before we award any contracts, but we can at least see, you know, what towns they've passed it in to get this passed.
Alderman Tolemy.
I think, you know, one of the things I think, I'm not opposed to doing that, but I think, again, and, you know, Alderman Winger, you had mentioned it yourself, the window is getting short. So, what I would recommend then is we do is, we authorize the city manager tonight to start the process. Let Alderman Suback give them the information. Let the city attorney give the city manager the information, and we go with it tonight and see if we can come up with at least an idea by next Thursday. Because, think about it, okay? We don't have another meeting then for the rest of this month. Now you're going into September, okay? Whoever, if, if we decide to go that direction, we're not gonna have a lot of time for that, for any company to do a whole lot, you know, in, in two months' time. Not, not even, a month's time. Okay? Because it'll probably be October by the time we actually get anything done.
Alderman Suback?
That being said, I don't think anybody really wants to see political flyers coming out in September. There, I mean, it's a timing issue. So, I think, I think there is enough time. We do need to move on it, but, you know, I don't know if we can get all this information to the manager within a week, but I know the company I spoke to was excited to look at the possibilities, and they said they would forward stuff once, you know, the council wanted us to do something like that.
So, is your suggestion to have, um, our city manager work with some of these companies to determine what the fee would be and what would be involved in that, and then come back next Thursday at the city council meeting?
Correct. And the mayor's thinking, he's not, and as I said, he doesn't think we can. Mr. Bond, I thought at these strategic planning meetings, said that the city can expend, uh, and, and if maybe we can't, if it's, you know, gonna be $2,000, and we can take contributions or something to see if we want to get it done.
And then, next Thursday, we could also do the legal review to, you know, discuss to make sure that it, it would be feasible from, from that perspective? Okay. Okay, so, I make that motion? Or, or do you wish to make that motion?
No, no, you can make it.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll ask the minute taker to repeat the, the motion.
Shoot it. It's a motion to direct the city manager to accept proposals for marketing firms to market the sales tax referendum. That was your motion, right, Ms. Winger? And that was my second.
Ms. Schultz, do you, do you need more clarification on it?
Yeah, could you just repeat that?
Okay. Um, Alderman Suback, why don't you repeat it?
It's a motion directing the city manager to accept proposals for marketing firms to campaign and market the, uh, sales tax referendum for the November election. Not to sign a contract, just to accept proposals.
And the question? Alderman Shaki.
Is this one of those things where if it doesn't pass, they don't get paid? Is there a guarantee of any kind? I mean...
That'd be a great question to ask them, but I think they'll go as far as driving a bus around if we want them to.
Although you have to be very careful in your comments on this. We cannot take a position using taxpayers' money in support of. So, we can engage somebody for public distribution of information, but not to actively tell people to vote yes. That would have to be strictly private funds and private donations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is, um, item number eight for information only. Actually, it's probably for a report and recommendation. There is an ordinance, and, and do I understand correct that you'd like us to vote on the verbiage? For the, I'm sorry, for the garbage rates municipal code?
Alderman Winger, this is just a housekeeping item. If you recall, in January of 2005, the city, the city entered into negotiations and accepted proposals for refuse disposal services. And BFI was awarded the contract beginning on May 1st of 2005. It's a five-year contract, and during the negotiations, we discussed the, um, various ways that municipalities use to have residents pay for refuse services. Um, there are communities that use bag programs, some use stickers. Certainly, yard waste and recycling have to be separate from everything else. You can have limited pickup as opposed to unlimited pickup, which is what Wooddale has. Lots of different ways to do it. We did discuss, uh, the disparity between the amount of refuse that a senior household of two people generates compared to a household with five children. However, um, every time we tried to separate out a group of our customers to see if we could get the rates to be lower, it actually ended up to be total, overall cost was higher because of the implementation of this type of program. So, we, we believe that the contract as it was negotiated offered the lowest rates and the lowest rate increases over the five-year period. Unfortunately, the ordinance that governs the garbage and refuse, and particularly the, the charges for it, um, I don't think had been changed since 2003. And so, it didn't read correctly based on the way the city now is, is negotiating for the garbage rate. So, all this does is clean up paragraph 6.304, scavenger service rates and charges. And essentially, what it says is, the rate is going to be, and this is how the rate has always been, but it, the rate is going to be whatever the rate is charged by the scavenger company, plus an administrative fee of 80 cents per month. And that administrative fee covers the postage and the, the processing of the actual garbage bill. So, that's all this does, is just, just fix that paragraph. Instead of stating a certain rate, it allows for these multi-year contracts.
Thank you. So, I am going to, uh, make the motion to accept the ordinance as presented, an ordinance amending the municipal code, chapter six, article three, garbage and refuse. Is there a second? And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is for information only. It's a DuPage water rate survey, and this is a survey looking at the residential, um, fees across 25 municipalities, and looking at their straight fees as well as, like, the tack on other charges. And, um, it, I felt that it told the story where, um, right in where we really should be, basically. And, Ms. Powers, would you like to add anything else to that?
Thank you, Chairman Winger. Exhibit one shows the data as it was first gathered. And so, those rates don't necessarily tell the whole story. That's why they're all those footnotes. Um, I wanted to see if there was a correlation between largest population and lowest rate, and certainly Naperville with the largest population had the lowest rate. But when you, when you factor in their base charge, their flat charge, really they're at 2550, not 1730. So, they're, they're a little lower, but they're not the lowest. And Oak Brook Terrace, which had the lowest population, had the highest rates. Um, so, but then I, then I began to look at some of the other communities, and it really doesn't track. But one of the reasons why it doesn't track is because, a lot of times, people don't realize that certain communities, especially those in Cook County, have the Metropolitan Sanitary District handle their sewage treatment. And in DuPage County, Wheaton, for an example, has its own sanitary district. Wooddale handles its own sewage treatment, and that is reflected in rates as well. So, you, you really, you can't always compare these, and when they, I don't know who did this survey, but when they send out the information, someone in the finance department fills it out, and, you know, they, they say, "Tell us what the rate is for 7,500 gallons." And they don't always tell the whole story about these utility rates. So, you had, just have to be aware that there are other things that have to get charged. On exhibit two is where I took those flat charges that I knew about and adjusted the rates accordingly. You'll see now Naperville is up to 2550 instead of 1730, and Wooddale is ninth out of 25 instead of, I think we were fifth or seventh before. So, there are some differences, but we, we seem to be relatively in line, considering the fact that the rates were not increased here for so many years. And we don't have that information in front of us from these other communities, how often they raise the rates, and when was the last time they raised the rates.
Mr. Mayor?
Do we not have a demand fee on water, and do not other communities?
I'm sorry?
A demand fee, a service fee for having the pipes in the ground?
We have a flat fee.
And that's not included in this analysis?
It is, it is included in here.
They don't say any notation for Wooddale.
No, because I thought everyone knew what Wooddale was. I was notating the communities we didn't know enough about. Um, and, and that's one of the points I made in, about the survey. There are a lot of communities that use minimum billing. If you think about this, let's say somebody doesn't have their water shut off, but they go away for several months of the year. They're gonna pay a minimum bill, whether they use a gallon of water or not. And that is a way that some communities use to cover a portion of their fixed costs of the system, just to keep charging that, and we don't do that. Other communities have a, a stratified rates for commercial. Commercial will be higher than residential. Alderman Winger asked me that question earlier today, and, and I determined that about 67% of our water pumped is for residential. So, that would leave the rest for commercial and industrial, and then a little bit for church, school, and, and government use. But, um, we could certainly consider that at some point, talking about having commercial rates that might be a bit higher. Right now, Wooddale does have higher sewer commercial rates, but not higher water rates. Everybody pays the same rate for 1,000 gallons of water.
Alderman Suback?
This also doesn't take into consideration what other towns are doing with, uh, rehabbing their water system.
Exactly.
And how much money they're spending. Um, and so I think that needs to be factored in also, because some of these towns might be way behind where we are, or way ahead. I do think we need to put on a future meeting a commercial rate, uh, because if, you know, one out of five communities are doing, I know Melrose Park has three rates. They have a residential, a resident rate, a commercial rate, and then a senior rate. Uh, so, and that's something we could look at. Not the senior rate at this point, but at least the commercial rate would be something to do.
Any other comments? Item was for information only. Our next item is items to be considered at future meetings. Item A, payroll status for employees hired before 1998. Item B, payroll outsourcing. Item C, audit update, which is ongoing update. Item D, updated report on water billing usage discrepancies. I'm gonna add an item E to look at the, uh, commercial water rates. Are there any other items? I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to take a break before we call the Public Health Judiciary Committee. Five-minute break. I'd like to call the Public Health Judiciary Committee to order. Minute taker, please take role.
Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Tolemy?
Here.
Alderman Suback?
Here.
Alderman Shaki?
Here.
Alderman Pazek?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Knight?
I need a motion to approve of July 13, 2006 minutes.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need to, um, if there's a problem, I'd like to move item five...